Good morning and welcome to the May 12th, 2021 city council meeting. It is nine o'clock. We're going to begin with the invocation and Councilmember McKellar will be giving the invocation. If you please stand with me.
To our mayor, to city council, to our city manager and all of those that serve this great community, it's an honor to be able to bring invocation to you this morning. All wise and eternal God in heaven, thank you so much for this day. Thank you so much for a new beginning. And Father, thank you so much for those who serve this great community, this great city of Tyler. Thank you for the city staff. Thank you for all of those citizens, the constituents throughout this great community that we come together to make Tyler even a greater city. Father and I say thank you for the reelection. Thank you for District Three in particular. Thank you for all of those that want to serve and will continue to serve this great community. Father, in Jesus' name, we ask that you bless us and that you accept this prayer in your name, and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up, we have the minutes from the February 24th council meeting. If I could...
Two, three.
Great.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we move on to Cassandra.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
A whole year, oh, I'm sorry, just a few months we was here. So this morning, we're coming to canvas the returns of the city council election held May first, 2021 for districts number one, three, and five, and adopted ordinance declaring the results. So whereas on the 12th day of May, 2021, the city council of the city of Tyler, at a meeting, at a meeting called for the purpose of canvassing the returns of the city council election held on the first day of May, 2021, in the city of Tyler, for the election of the city council members for district one, three, and five, and as a result of such canvass that the following nine persons received the following number of votes for city council members, member of districts number one, three, and five. So District One, we had Greg Grubbs at 233 votes, Stuart Haney at 766 votes. District Three, we had Shirley McKellar at 345 votes, Delala Reynoso, 183. And District Five, we had Kenneth Freeman at 69 votes, and Bob Westbrook at 278 votes. So now therefore, being ordained by the city council of the city of Tyler, Texas, that Stuart Haney be, and is hereby declared the duly elected city council member for district number one to serve for a two-year term of office, Shirley McKellar to be elected for city council member for district number three to serve for a two-year term, and Bob Westbrook, hereby duly elected city council member for district five to serve for a two-year term.
Thank you, Cassandra. We will need to take action on this, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the election results.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by, who was it seconded by?
It's all Chris.
Everybody else. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. I hope you get to go down.
Okay.
So at this time, we'll do a certificate of election and oath of office to be administered to, first we're going to do Councilmember McKellar. Judge Amy McKellar will be the oath of office. In the name by the authority of the state of Texas... You're going to repeat it earlier. Yes. In the name by the authority of the state of Texas, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Shirley J. McKellar, I, Shirley J. McKellar, resolve, swear, affirm, solemnly, in the name of the state of Texas, in the name of the state of Texas, the office of Tyler City Council District Three, of the office of Tyler City Council District Four, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability... And will to the best of my ability... ...preserve, protect, and defend... Preserve, protect, and defend... ...the Constitution and laws of the United States... The Constitution and laws of the United States... And of this state... And of this state... So help me God. So help me God. Your name is... Thank you. Good morning. Thank you. Okay, and we'll have Bob Westbrook to come forward, please.
In the name by the authority of the state of Texas... In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Bob Westbrook, I, Bob Westbrook, resolve, swear, affirm, solemnly, in the name of the state of Texas, in the name of the state of Texas, I, Bob Westbrook, I, Bob Westbrook, resolve, swear, affirm, solemnly, in the name of the state of Texas, in the name of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability... And will to the best of my ability... ...preserve, protect, and defend... Preserve, protect, and defend... ...the Constitution and laws of the United States... The Constitution and laws of the United States... And of this state... And of this state... So help me God. So help me God.
Okay, so now before I have any other questions, uh, the city council members, Stuart Haney to come forward, please.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas... In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Stuart Haney... I, Stuart Haney... ...resolve, swear, affirm, solemnly, in the name of the state of Texas, in the name of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability... And will to the best of my ability... ...preserve, protect, and defend... Preserve, protect, and defend... ...the Constitution and laws of the United States... The Constitution and laws of the United States... And of this state... And of this state... So help me God. So help me God.
We're going to change here. I want to thank Linda Friend.
No, I was just saying, we got the judge too close.
Okay, now we're going to, we're going to swap everything up like we do every time, so this is going to look crazy up here, but it's okay. Okay. Haney's going to go where Winn is. Westbrook is going to go here. Shirley is going to go to my left. And we got McGee here, Curtis next to McGee, and Winn next to our attorney. So here we are with a, with a new council, and I will say, Bob, Shirley, congratulations. We're glad you're back. We look forward to serving with you in the future. Councilman Haney, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
The new councilman always sits right next to the city manager.
Training wheels.
So it's kind of the, it's kind of the, the training wheels, and if you do anything that's inappropriate, you get the shoulder, you get the elbow in the arm.
Usually the city attorney can then look straight across at you.
So we'll continue with the meeting, but if anyone would like to say anything, we'd love to have comments.
Just excited to serve. This will be my last term on council, and what an incredible council that I get to serve with. And so I want to thank the citizens of District Five, and, and I'm honored to serve with each and every one of you, and serve the great employees of the city of Tyler and the citizens of the city.
And I say welcome to you, and I know that those training wheels are going to be very effective for you, if they work for me. So I say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to everybody. It's a pleasure to be able to serve again.
Stuart?
I want to say thank you to my family and friends who showed up this morning. Thank you very much. It means a lot to me that y'all would take time out of y'all's day and schedule to be here and support me. And then to the residents, the citizens of District One, thank you very much for your support, and I look forward to this opportunity and working with everybody up here, so thank y'all very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you all, and I'm looking forward to this next year, and I think we've got a great council, and serve a great community, and so I'm excited about the future. So the next item on the agenda is E4, where we elect a new mayor pro tem. Mayor, I move to elect Councilwoman McKellar as the mayor pro tem.
Second.
Oh, really?
Yes. We, we have a motion by McGee, a second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, Mayor Pro Tem McKellar.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Z1, Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. This request is a, a request for a thorough fair closure for unimproved portions of Maggie Street and Everson Avenue. This is in the city council district number four. The adjacent properties are primarily undeveloped. The applicant plans to incorporate these two unimproved rights-of-way into the adjacent properties. The easternmost portion of Maggie Street and Belcher Avenue, which is the north-south street there, were closed in 2000, and that was done to facilitate the development of that tract, that had one tract to the east. As you can see here, the area is primarily undeveloped. There is development along Front Street, and the applicant plans to combine two of the tracts together after the closure of the right, the right-of-way. Of the notices that were sent out, two were returned in favor of the request, and two were returned in opposition with, with the concern about access to their properties. As you can see in red, the, as the streets are not currently destructive, the, the rights-of-way are not providing any required access to these, these properties, and the city doesn't have, does not have any plans to destruct these roads in the future. The plan in Zone Commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval of the, the closure of this, these two portions of Everson Avenue and Maggie Street, subject to the rights-of-way being replanted into the adjacent properties, properties within six months.
So why again do the people protest or not like it?
Yes, they, they were concerned about the, the other mains, or other ways of access into this area, so all the, the properties that are, I guess, in red there, they do have other ways of accessing the property, either from Front Street, Old Henderson Highway, or, or Gull Street, and so, but they were concerned about having, or losing the other ways to the property.
Aren't these like four-wheeler trails?
There's none.
There's nothing. All right. Any other questions for Kyle? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve Z1.
Second.
Motion by Winn, second by McGee. Any further discussion?
Did you have a card, Mr. Mayor, on Z1? I don't remember if there was one on that one or not.
Z1, yes. Stephanie Curry.
Stephanie Curry?
I'm, I'm not going to state, thank you, though.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. George.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations, Shirley, Bob, Stuart, your elections.
Thank you.
Before we begin, we're going to talk to you. Good morning, Mike. So, again, I'm George Robertson, Northeast Texas Public Health District, and Dr. McGahay, who's our Smith County Health Authority, is here with us today as well, so let me share with you our updated case dashboard. So there it is, you see up there, we have, as of this, as of Monday, we're now updating our case dashboards on Mondays and Thursdays. As of Monday, we had 20,286 COVID-19 cases in Smith County. Of these, 11,814 are confirmed cases of COVID-19, and eight,872 are probable cases. And again, for the confirmed, is a, is the difference in type of test for Stuart, that the confirmed is a PCR test, and probable is, is an antigen test. And we've done that for several months now that way, so, but we combine that into one big count. Our recovered patient case count is now 19,363, including both confirmed and probable cases, and as of Monday, there were 42 East Texans in Tyler, Texas hospitals. We've had 296 Smith County residents who have passed away from COVID-19. And again, once again, our condolences go out to those individuals who have lost a loved one due to COVID-19. So we're now, I guess, 15 months into this journey, since I reported the first three positive cases in Smith County in this room on Friday, March the 13th. So where are we now? The picture continues to improve. The daily number of COVID-19 positive cases has dropped, the number of COVID-19 hospitalized patients is significantly lower, and access to receive a COVID-19 vaccination has dramatically improved. I've used the analogy that we're in the fourth quarter, and we're also seeing light at the end of the tunnel. So what are we asking you to do today? If you're 16 and older today, and you have not yet received a COVID-19, make plans to get it, and you can even get your vaccine today. We're vaccinating people at Harvey Hall today, local pharmacies have the, have the, have the vaccine, hospitals and clinics have the vaccine. There are numerous places that you can get the vaccine. There's an adequate supply of vaccine in our community, and you can even choose now if you want the Pfizer vaccine, the Moderna vaccine, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. My message today is, get vaccinated. So we now are touched personally by this virus, and our family and friends have tested positive for COVID-19, and unfortunately, we've known many people have passed away. Our hospitals have done a great job of handling the surge of patients during these months, so thanks to them for their Herculean efforts. So now let me share some more charts and graphs with you. First one is the net health seven-day rolling rate of COVID-19 per county. Again, this looks at the seven-day average of daily routine positive cases of infection per 100,000 in the population. We're at 5.03 in Smith County, and what that says is, is that five, over the last seven days, 5.03 residents out of, 5.03 out of 100,000 residents has tested positive for COVID each day in the last seven days. So again, it hasn't gone away, but that number is significantly down. How far down is it? When I presented to council on January 13th, just four months ago, according, according to my math, it was 73.1, so significant reduction. And again, rolling rate is among the best ways to closely monitor whether the trend over time is increasing, decreasing, or flattening. The second is our net health COVID-19 daily new cases. Again, we're, we, we work, our preparedness team and disease surveillance team works in seven East Texas counties, not only Smith County, but Anderson, Greve, Henderson, Wood, Van Sant, and Rains. So that's, that's the trend line there, and you can see, a little thing doesn't really work on there, but you can see that that number's really flattening out there. It's really, it peaked up back in January, and it's really been flattening. Same chart for Smith County, same result. The numbers have just kind of flattened there really since, I'd say, really since the freeze back in the middle part of February. Our next slide here is our net health age distribution. I haven't shown this lately, but it's still interesting to see, you know, for a while there, we said that the, the 21 to 30 crowd was the one that was really, had the greatest group of testing positive. You can kind of see over time that that number's really kind of flattened out, really the 21 to 30, 31 to 40, 51 to 60 group, and then the others are kind of all grouped there together. But that 11 to 20 group is 5873, and it's coming up in the world there. And that's something I want to share with you right now. So what does that, what does that look like? So you know, there's, and Dr. McGahay will be talking about this momentarily, about the potential for the Pfizer vaccine to be given to children who are 12 to 15 years of age. So why is it, why is it, why should we think about that? Well, you see there, looking at that graph, you, you look at the, the, zero to 11 has a certain, but it really starts to creep up about 12. You notice that? Then 13, 14, 15, all the way up to 16 range there. So you see that, that peak really starts about age 12 is what it looks like there. So that's one of the reasons why, that they're considering the Pfizer vaccine for the 12 to 15 age group. Our Smith County active, age of active cases, again, same type of trend. We've only got around 600 active cases right now in Smith County, but you see, those are the numbers right there of the age group that we have. Hospitalizations, again, 42 in the hospital on, on Monday. Our peak was back in January, mid-January, when we had that 73. We talked about that 73 number for seven-day rolling rate. It was, we had 319 East Texans in Tyler, Texas hospitals on January 13th, I think it was. And then going back to that 15% number we talked so much in this room about in other places, our RAC, our percent hospital capacity for COVID-19, 2.9, 2.94% as of Sunday. So that number's really trended down and kind of staying pretty flat right now. The folks have died from this disease, primarily older individuals, and you can kind of see there that the, the number starts to increase over the 50 range, and really progressively gets larger, 60s, and even higher than that. Here's the vaccination number from, I'll show you the, the state, and then I'll show you Smith County. In the state of Texas, and we pulled this off the website yesterday, people vaccinated with at least one dose in Texas, 11,447,000, and fully vaccinated, 8,709,000. So if you combine those two together, you've got to come up with roughly 20 million people in Texas have been vaccinated. Same chart for Smith County, 72,000 have been, residents have been vaccinated here in, in Smith County with at least one dose, 60,000 people fully vaccinated. And one of the things that we've noticed, that the, the rates, we're looking at some charts yesterday, the rates in East Texas are, are not as strong really as the, as the metroplex areas, the larger cities, maybe even the valleys. So there's some work to be done in getting our East Texas citizens vaccinated. And again, the message for today is, get vaccinated. There's, there's plenty of opportunities for you to receive a vaccine in this community all over East Texas, so please take the step today and get vaccinated for, from this Final thing is net health active case rates by ZIP code. You see that there, as well as the vaccination percentage by ZIP code. If you look here, if you'll see roughly the Smith County area, I wish I could show you that a little bit here, but you know where Smith County is, just look straight up there. On the right-hand side, you see that our vaccination rates are pretty good in Smith County, but again, our rural areas are really kind of lagging on the vaccination rates. We're trying to do some work right now through net health to try to get out to those areas. We've got teams going out there right now. There's been lots of efforts being made, but there's still more work to be done in these, particularly these rural areas. Couple of points before I bring Dr. McGahay up here. Testing, local providers have access to testing, and we still have the free testing site. And thank you Broderick McGee, he offered his church, the New Life Church, across from Tyler High School, for three months, when he volunteered back in January. I don't think he knew what he was, what the effort he would be doing, but thank you for three months of doing this and offering this to your community. And thank you Councilwoman McKellar for offering up North Tenahaw. North Tenahaw took on the, the opportunity to be the testing site. They started the first of May, so thank you for allowing that. The testing, pre-testing site is open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 9 to 4. So please, if you know somebody that needs a pre-test, go by and get that taken care of. Local hospital update, again, we remain in communication with our hospitals. They're both doing well at this point in time with COVID-19 cases, and kind of have started really transitioning to other types of work that they have been, have been, has been kind of put on the hold for a while there. So the hospitals still have COVID-19 cases in there, but their positivity rates are down, so we continue to have good dialogue with the hospitals. Vaccine additional points before Dr. McGahay comes up here. We gave our, our first vaccine on Christmas Eve, and we've been able to move our vaccine efforts to Harvey Hall, thanks to the city of Tyler. Thank you for allowing us to use the convention center and had it sole opportunity to be in there really since early February, so we thank you for that, and the staff has been terrific, so we're very grateful, and has worked great as a hub site for the state. We provided Moderna vaccine early until early February, and when the state told us they could send us more doses, we switched to Pfizer, which is really, we've seen some real uptick in our numbers of vaccines by switching to Pfizer. It's been a Herculean effort by my staff, the faculty and students from UT Tyler School of Nursing and Pharmacy, UT Health Science Center, Christus, the Smith County Medical Society, local retired physicians, numerous community volunteers, our local restaurants for feeding the vaccine staff, we've been so grateful for that, the Department of State Health Services Regional Office, and our contact part, contract partner, Gail Healthcare. And to date, as of yesterday evening, at our hub site, we've given 65,186 vaccines, 36,561 first doses, 28,385 second doses, and 241 of the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So with that, I'm going to transition on to Dr. McGahay.
Thank you, George.
Good morning, Paul McGahay, Smith County Local Health Authority. Mayor, Council, thank you for this invitation. Congratulations to those of you newly elected and reelected, that's great. I'll be talking about the vaccination, and just before I get started with my brief update, it's been a really positive road. I know back in November, December, we were seeing that the vaccine was 90 to 94% effective in the trials. We were wondering, you know, will that really translate into the population when we vaccinate across the country, Texas and Smith County, and really it has, and you're going to see some very good news as I roll through these slides here in just a second. First of all, just, this caught my eye a couple of days ago, a new modeling from CDC predicts that we'll see a continued sharp drop-off in COVID-19 infections and deaths by July, if that high vaccination coverage is achieved, and most of the country maintains a moderate adherence to non-pharmaceutical interventions like masking and physical distancing. So we're headed in the right direction. We don't need to let up on the throttle for vaccine and being careful out there, especially in crowds with non-vaccinated individuals. Speaking of vaccine, it has a dosages administered have dropped off across the country. This is a national slide where you see by early May, late April, the numbers of doses administered have taken a slight dip. You know, we have saturated almost, not completely, the senior population, but we need to do a better job in the younger populations. In Texas, this is a rather busy slide, you can see the dip for the, the ice storm, but looking at the blue line, first doses administered, you can see a peak sort of in March, mid-March, early April, and that continues to dip a little bit, too. So with Mr. Roberts, other public health officials, we do, do need to keep the drive toward people receiving vaccination, especially in the younger age groups. And this demonstrates that, we have doses administered, fully vaccinated individuals by age group. You can see the green and the blue bar up at the top, those are 60, 70-year-olds going down. We see 50, 40, 30... We see 50, 40, 30 and 20-year-old, 20-years-old, 20-year-olds there. The red bar is 20-year-olds. You can see that about 17% of 20-year-olds are fully vaccinated. We're about 64% of those above 65 are fully vaccinated. So we are channeling and focusing a lot more efforts on those younger age groups as we speak. You know, younger age groups don't typically become as ill, although they can with the vaccine. But they can certainly, if they catch the disease, can spread it to others who are more vulnerable to serious side effects from COVID-19. This is a breakdown by race, ethnicity in, in Smith County. And I just thought it would be interesting to look at this. If you look at the orange bar, those are the Caucasian population, about 50%. You can see that big blue bar down in the slice of the pie down at the bottom. Those are unknowns, but when we first started the vaccination, DSH, Sustained Health Department wasn't capturing ethnicity data, but they're doing a better job. So you know, about 25%, 20% are unknown. But you look at the African-American population, 14% of the vaccinated are from that population, which I think is great. The Hispanic population is, is still low, it's about 9.4%. And that's improving, but especially with outreach efforts at net health. But that needs to come up, but overall that gives you kind of a little picture of what's happening here. Running in parallel with, with other parts of the state, you know, the valley is primarily Hispanic and, and they have done a good job in vaccinating down there. This, these next two slides really tell the story and are the most important in my slide deck. The green bar, it looks like Christmas up there, sort of. The green bar is a rolling seven-day average hospitalization admission rate for people over 70. The red bar are the number of vaccinations that have been administered in Texas. And if you were to plot this out for Smith County, it would look similar to this. But you can see in, in George's slides paralleled this, the case hospitalizations peaks right around late January, early February at the EOC meetings. We were, you know, increasingly concerned about that. Beds were, you know, in limited supply, ventilators were, you know, we were doing, holding our own, but concerned about that. But as the vaccination started and here, Christmas Eve, and vaccines for the 70-year-old plus group started increasing, you can see that that line has just plummeted and has come down to where it is now. And as the vaccination line increased. So that's just a demonstration that yes, we are seeing that that vaccine is very effective in populations. And this just tells the tale, I think, and speaks volumes. This next slide is interesting too. This is a national slide and I think I've put it in every slide deck over the last two weeks since I received it. But just COVID hospitalizations among adults 65 and older. The moral of this story is that if an individual 65 and older receives two doses of COVID vaccine or one dose of Pfizer, but this was based on Moderna and Pfizer, or one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, rather, that they, if they receive two dose, 14 days after that second dose, they have a 94% reduction in the risk of being hospitalized. And that is just amazing. And so vaccine, as the caption says on the top, is a critical tool to reduce severe COVID-19 in adults 65 and older. And as you recall, the state of Texas opted to target seniors early on and didn't quite fall in line with CDC guidelines. And I think, I'm glad we decided to do that because this kind of demonstrates the effectiveness of that. Just a couple of other slides, just public health guidelines for people fully vaccinated or getting more liberal and liberal. Fully vaccinated people per CDC can gather indoors without physical distancing or wearing masks with other people fully vaccinated or unvaccinated people from one other household. Fully vaccinated people should continue to wear masks and stay six feet apart from other people in other settings like when they are in public or visiting with unvaccinated people from multiple households. And I saw where Dr. Fauci stated that he was open to further relaxing indoor masking guidelines on the Sunday news shows a couple of days ago. My last slide is, as Mr. Roberts mentioned, FDA has already approved the Pfizer vaccine for children 12 to 15 years old. On Monday, maybe today, certainly this week, CDC will follow suit. And when that happens, the vaccine administrators can go ahead and initiate vaccination in that age range. If you, the trial of these individuals, 12 to 15-year-olds showed it was very effective in these age groups with minimal side effects, side effect profile similar to older age groups. And so as soon as we get the word today, tomorrow, whatever, we can start vaccinating those 12 to 15-year-olds with the Pfizer vaccine immediately. So George, I'll turn it back over to you and I'll stay up here if we have any questions.
Sure. So final thing, again, I'll just say thank you again to city for, to Mr. Bressard, Mayor Warren, city staff. We've had Chief Kobel, we've had Chief Toler, we've had many, many other members, Julie Goodgame have been very active in our EOC. Your staff at the Harvey Convention Center has been just absolutely outstanding, has, has done, you know, they've been, they've been great. So city has supported us tremendously in this effort. So thank you all very much for all that you've done to, to help with this. And again, shout out to my staff as well. My staff has worked many, many hours to keep this thing going, so, in, in many different angles. So thank you very much. So questions?
Any questions for George or Dr. McGahay?
Yeah, I've got one. George, when it comes to promoting messaging that everyone needs to get this vaccine, especially the 12 and ups. I've seen marketing pieces in Gregg County and I wanted to know if we had anything similar to that plan for Smith County or any of the other areas?
Yeah, we're actually going to do, we're doing some, we're doing some radio ads right now. We're planning to do a major push the rest of this month to try to get the word out, Bob. And so yeah, we're, this is, we think this is, we, we think our opportunity to really get people's attention is really now between now and end of school. So hopefully we can get their attention now with the 12 to 15 group. So we're, our plan is to really get some, some buys out there and make some, some media buys to try to get this out quickly.
Great, thank you. And then one for Dr. McGahay and it has to deal with the variant. Even though citizens may have contracted COVID-19, the original strain. So what is the, do we have any infection rate numbers on the variant? But I guess the, the bottom, the message that I would like to send out is that they are still, citizens that have had COVID are still liable for getting, are susceptible to getting the variant.
That can happen, Councilman. The B117, that UK variant, is becoming the predominant strain here. But fortunately, Moderna, Pfizer and J&amp;J vaccine do protect an individual against those. We need to be vigilant and monitoring those others like the Brazil variant, the P1, the P1 and then others from South Africa. Some studies coming out show that the vaccines are better than we thought against some of the variants, but they're always happening. We don't know what's happening in India with all that mixing and churning there, sadly, the situation they're in. So we will be monitoring that. So I agree with you, it's good to go ahead and receive the vaccine. Probably we'll be having booster doses. I don't know when, I don't know if by the end of the year or by early next year. It'll be sort of like the flu season with those booster doses to help capture those variants like you mentioned.
Great, good question. So the booster dose will not be a replacement for the two-dose vaccine or the single with the Johnson &amp; Johnson?
You'll, you'll still need that primary series and then that booster, which will be reformulated to include some of those variants that you described.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you both for being here. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Roberts and Dr. McGahay for working with the African-American and the brown and black community in helping us to get that vaccine out to that community and, and our task force. And so we have in our audience, Dr. Richard Hagney, who actually formulated. Thank you, Dr. Hagney, for being here. He actually helped to establish the Black and Brown Task Force. So we want to thank you for helping us to get those out into the rural communities.
We need, we can bring a team over to get vaccinated, but we need people there. So that was, your role is get people there. So thank you for organizing with your church, North Tenahaw. That was very, very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll say one thing before I call Bob up here. This is the first meeting that we have opened up. And it's good to see or not to see all that blue tape across chairs where you can't sit. It's good to see people out there. And it's also good to have this plexiglass removed that separates each one of us. Because when you're up here in this plexiglass, it's, you're in this bubble, in this tube and it's hard to communicate. So it's just this newness where we are, I love it. Thank you for what you guys have done. We're, we're making it through it, so thank you.
Just go over to the accident.
I've got a card here from Bob Brewer. Bob, if you can just say your name and address for the record.
I'll try to remember to do that. Bob Brewer, 1800 DeCharles, Tyler, Texas. I guess maybe I can pick this off now. My exemption for wearing a mask. Anyway, I want to apologize for the roughness of this presentation. I want to reiterate my experience. I've worked with some of the top scientists on earth, including the father of global warming and the matriarch of climate change and Carl Sagan's boss at Cornell. Also, I was, I want to talk about rule of law and the application of that to these inoculations and this COVID stuff. So anyway, 10 days ago, I was fortunate enough to give, get Ken Paxton, Attorney General, to give me a, a statement on the, our first sentence of our first law in America. And that's the laws of nature and the laws of nature's God. So he is very in sync with what I'm, I'm about to say. All laws in America are to be subservient to God's laws. And no laws can be passed that infringe on our God-given, unalienable rights. I say this because the only guarantee in the Constitution is a republican form of government. And what that means is that we elect y'all to know the issues and to act accordingly. And if we have questions, you answer them and report back to us. This is my fourth time here talking about COVID. I've asked questions every time and I have yet to see one answer. I know a written letter has a lot of importance, but I think the public statement should have more. And I would like to hear some answers. One of the things I would like to announce is tonight, there's going to be a COVID meeting at Holly Tree Country Club. Some of Bob, Senator Bob Hall's friends from the American Association of Physicians and Surgeons will be there to talk about these issues. There's also the opposite side of the aisle that will be there, so they'll sort of have kind of a debate. I would like anybody here that wants to come to Holly Tree, if they're serving dinner, I'll buy you dinner and we can talk about it. So let's see. It's tomorrow night. My questions about the inoculations, have they been approved by the FDA? Or are these inoculations only given an emergency use authorization? And if only emergency use, use authorizations, why emergency use authorizations when early treatments and prophylaxis have proven very effective all over the world? Except for here, where they've been resisted and we haven't been able to use them. I, in fact, got arrested and thrown in jail for not being able to comply with some of these requirements to handle this when I was prophylactic. So, and I would also ask, if, if we get this inoculation, does that keep us from having to wear a mask? Does it keep us from transmitting the virus to others? And in the fall, there's been some speculation that this mRNA injection could relieve, could make, turn us into more than spreaders, but shedders, where we're actually transmitting the virus to the other people around us. So this is a very important thing that I would love y'all to get me an answer for. So once again, I apologize for my awkwardness in making a presentation. But there's just been way too much canceling of speech and truth about the science of, of what's going on here. And I've had hundreds of doctors reference my work in their publications. And I think that since I've worked with so many amazing scientists, that maybe somebody should listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer, for your comments. I, I will make one comment when you talk about one, having questions and wanting answers. I'm not a doctor and that's why we bring in George Roberts and Dr. McGahay. Do we bring in the professionals, the, the scientists, the people that know what they're doing to, to really try to inform us? And no, 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 we're not, they're not going to come back. Okay. Sorry about that. But anyway, we, we really do rely on the medical professionals. So Bob, thanks for your comments. Dr. McGahay, George, thank you for guiding us and helping us through this process and thanks for being here. All right, we're going to move to P2.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers.
Good morning.
My name is Leanne and I'm here, I'm really excited to be here to talk about some of the things that we have been doing in Parks Recreation. So I want to start by saying that we updated our master plan in 2019. And it was adopted for years 2020 to 2030. However, with, we have had some really creative funding come our way the last few years. So we're kind of ahead by about five or six years on our implementation schedule. So therefore Parks employees and our leadership staff has went to the lengths of, sorry. We, we did some staff workshops and we decided to look at everything that was left on this implementation schedule and make some updates to it. And in that, we had some staff workshops and they participated in the ranking of all of the new facilities and all of the facilities that we have not yet got to. We have made so much more progress than we ever hoped for in the last few years and I'm going to go over some of that with you. With the, the ranking system, we had a report card actually that we sent the staff out with. And the components of each areas were listed on an evaluation sheet. And they took into consideration the age, the cleanliness, the safety, the structural appearance and functionality. So I'm going to go through some of the really great things that we have already accomplished. I'm going to start in 2019. So we completed projects, Hillside Park renovation was completed. Phase one of the Faulkner Skate Park was completed. Gasaway Park, which was a complete community build, and we got that grant through Kaboom, was completed. Bergfeld Park Splasher renovation was completed. Legacy Trail was completed and opened. The South Side Park All-Inclusive Playground was completed. And all of the Glass Recreation Center renovations were completed in 2019. In 2020, we had this, you can see up here, these are some pictures of some dilapidated sidewalks at City Park. And so we fixed several of the sidewalks over there. Emmett J. Scott Park that we just did a ribbon cutting for, those are some aerial views of what the park looked like before and what the park looked like after. And if you guys haven't visited out at Emmett J. Scott, it's a beautiful park. So in 2020, as some of you know, we had some damage to our Pour and Play at the South Side Park, our inclusive area. And so we had to, even though we opened it, we had to shut several parts down so that we could make some repairs. So we reopened it and we got all those repairs done and we reopened it in 2020. My favorite, we actually redid Fun Forest Park. So we added a pool with a beach entry and we added a brand-new splash pad. We added tennis courts and we added a new soccer field. I will skip the video of the mayor sliding down our new slide. We also updated the Golden Road Park lower restrooms. Those restrooms were in terrible condition and... And they are right next to the T-ball field, so we thought it was very important to get those renovated because some of those little bitty kids couldn't run to the top of Golden Road Park to get to the restrooms quick enough. Those are beautiful, and they're up and running, and they're ready to go. We also updated Wolder Park. We actually moved the splash pad from Wolder Park to right in, right in front of the Glass Recreation Center. We also added the pavilion, the basketball pavilion at glass, and added a college-sized baseball field at Wolder. Rose Hill Cemetery. We actually had a shop out at Rose Hill Cemetery for our crew that works out at our cemeteries. And we decided to take down that shop and make some more room for some plots to be sold because we have a lot of people that want to purchase those at Rose Hill. So we're making a little more room over there. So what's to come? So after our ranking system, the report card that I was talking about, we decided to make some updates to our Parks and Open Space Master Plan. One of those updates is going to be a Parks Standard Amenities Plan. And really, what this is going to do is we want to create a standard moving forward in order to improve the aesthetics and quality of our parks. We are proposing a unified design plan for all parks. The goal is outlined in the master plan. So the specific goal is outlined. So what we wanted to do was, if you go to some of our parks due to lack of funding many, many, many years ago, it's kind of hodgepodge. There's some, if you go, you might see four different kinds of benches and five different kinds of picnic tables or trash cans. So we looked at the life expectancy of what we think needs to be in the parks moving forward. The only exception would be is if it's a themed park. So if you go to Hillside Park for any reason, you'll see that that themed park is all concrete, and it's for a reason, and it all matches, and it looks beautiful. Bergfeld Park also has a theme to it, and so everything kind of matches. This would be for any park that's not themed, just for us to make sure that we have nice benches that are going to last us a good while. The five-year implementation schedule, I'm going to go through that based on the ranking system and the report cards that we did. I'm going to go kind of through what, how we rank those and how the priority needs kind of fell through. But right now, the projects that we have going on is, we have Lindsey Park Restrooms. Those are getting updated, and I believe that those are almost finished, and they should be ready to open pretty quickly. Faulkner Skate Park, Phase Two. We actually just had the ribbon cutting for that a couple weeks ago, and it looks beautiful. Bergfeld Park, we are in the middle of renovating those tennis courts, and that will be the final plan for the master plan for Bergfeld Park. So we're really excited. We'll have that ribbon cutting as soon as the tennis courts are done in June. We do have, we are working on currently an additional soccer field at Fun Forest. It'll be a college-sized soccer field specifically for Texas College to utilize. We ran out of funds halfway through, so with the new budget year, we will hopefully finish that. So if you guys go out there, there's some construction going on at one of the fields. And Windsor Grove, we had some dilapidated sidewalks, and we fixed those, and we added some picnic tables. So moving forward, the new implementation schedule for projects for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. We are hoping to renovate PT Coal Park. And with that, will be restrooms, playground, basketball courts, pavilion, and sidewalks. We also are hoping to put some money back into Golden Road Park. We have put several, we have updated several things out there, but we want to take, you know, a large amount and actually go do some general infrastructure updates out there. So hopefully, that will be great. Rose Rudman Creek Stabilization Study. If you guys go out to Rose Rudman, which a lot of people do, you will see that there are definitely some erosion issues that are impeding on some of the sidewalks. And so at some point, we really need to hire somebody to go out there and do a study at how we're going to handle that moving forward in the future. Lindsey Park, master plan to include the drainage plan for the fields. So on the soccer side of Lindsey Park and on the baseball side of Lindsey Park, the softball side, we have some major issues with drainage. And so when it rains a lot, there's sitting water that we kind of have to pump out. So we're hoping that we can get a master plan and someone to come in and look and tell us how can we move forward to make those fields better. And then the Tyler Bike Club, the Children's Bike Park. The Tyler Bike Club came to our Parks Board meeting months ago, and they presented a bike park for children that they wanted to implement somewhere. And they got, they wanted our permission to start just fundraising for it. It's a really cool project. So in 2022, 2023, we told them that we would match some of their funds if they came up with the funding that they had promised. And then we'll decide on the location of the park at that time. Projects for fiscal year 2023, 24. We are going to put a new playground at Crescent Park. Don just visited there this weekend. We're going to put a new playground at Herndon Hills Park. We hope in this fiscal year to at least implement Phase One of the master plan from the study that we will get the year before. Rose Rudman Trail, the Trail Creek Stabilization, we also hope to implement Phase One of that study. Wolder Park, so Wolder Park was completely redone. The only thing we ran out of money for was to resurface those tennis courts. So we are going to hopefully put some money aside and research, get that done and resurface the tennis courts at Wolder. And then the Hillside Park Soccer Field Renovation. So again, we have completely renovated the playground side of Hillside Park, but on the other side of Hillside, there is a large soccer field, and it is used a lot. And there are some issues with that field, and so we hope to put some money back into that so they can continue playing on it. For fiscal year 24, 25, we are going to do Oak Grove, Northside Park Restrooms. Northside Park doesn't have, currently doesn't have restrooms out there, so we want to put some restrooms out there. TR Griffith, we hope to put a new basketball court and a pavilion out there. Gasaway Park does not currently have restrooms, so we're hoping to put a restroom out there. Children's Park, we're hoping to put a little back, money back into there in conjunction with those that run that park. And then we hope we can put some funds aside for some renovations for Ramey Gym. So years ago, TISD gave us Ramey Gym. It's used as a storage facility right now. And so we hope to turn that into more of a usable space. Projects 25, 26, and I promise I'm almost done. The Goodman-Legrand Museum Greenhouse, we hope to get that renovated and up and running. The possibility of having matching grant funds for future ATV trails. So every year, Tyler Parks and Wildlife tells us that there is a bunch of money left on the table for recreational vehicle trail money. And so we have had a lot of people ask us about, you know, where can they ride their go-karts? Where can they go and ride their four-wheelers, that kind of thing? So it would be nice in the future if we could locate some land, maybe at Lindsey Park or Faulkner Park, to provide some of that if we got a grant. The other things that we want to keep in mind moving forward, if we go through some of this list and we have money left over, we do need to look at updating all of our signage. So right here, you can see Hillside Park sign and Bergfeld Park sign. And Emmett J. Scott sign is also really beautiful. So we're hoping that we can kind of come through and start updating those signs to be uniformed a little bit, to look a little nicer. We also need to invest some money in some security system and cameras. Oftentimes, there are several parks that get vandalized frequently. And so we're hoping that that would help with those types of situations. We also want to put some money back into our field lighting improvements. Oftentimes, especially at Lindsey Park, those poles and those lights are very old, and so they go out very quickly. So it would be nice for us to kind of switch over to some more updated lighting. And then last but last, last but not least would be the irrigation improvements. We have some irrigation issues. We need to really update to a better irrigation program and more technology-friendly. There's oftentimes where we don't even know that a, you know, we have 130 medians, and someone will call us, and a head busted at one of the medians that we don't even know about unless someone sets eyes on it. So we are hoping to kind of move forward and update the irrigation improvements. I do want to say that several of these projects that were completed were not just completed by parks. We had many organizations that donated money and sponsorships. Neighborhood Services helped us with Emmett J. Scott. And we've had other departments that have just kind of jumped in and helped us. So we thank them, and we always, you know, love anybody that can help us out. But we are really excited. And if everything that I just said to you happens funding-wise at the end of 2027, we will have touched every single park that we have, which is 28 parks in the city of Tyler by the end of this plan, which is amazing considering some of these parks have not been touched at all in 20 or 30 years. I know there was a question when I gave this presentation about Nobly Young. And Nobly Young is on, we will, we are going to do something with Nobly Young. It's not on this list. But it is going to, we were hoping to partner with Neighborhood Services on some funding out there. So hopefully, that will be, that will be the last one, though. So does anybody have any questions for me?
I have no questions. I will say thank you to you and Russ for everything you guys have done with the parks. It really is amazing to see. We've got Scott Martinez out in the crowd, who's the CEO of the Tyler Economic Development Council, and some of his folks. And his job is to sell the city. And one of the things that he can utilize to sell the city are our parks. Because people, when they think about moving their businesses here or moving their families here, one of the things that they, we're driving down Broadway, and they see all the people at Bergfeld Park or wherever, the parks are one of the things that sell our cities. So thank you for helping sell our city. Good job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Mayor. I'm Heather Nick. I'm one of the managing directors for the city of Tyler with primary oversight over planning, geographic information systems, and economic development as it pertains to the city. It's my pleasure to introduce Scott Martinez today. He, as the mayor mentioned, he's the president and CEO of the Tyler Economic Development Council and the CEO of the Tyler Area Chamber of Commerce. He started last year in July, and he previously served as president of the North Louisiana Economic Partnership since 2013. In a career spanning over 20 years, he has worked directly on projects culminating in over 1.1 billion in direct capital investment. Scott has served in economic development roles in the Houston and Austin, Texas markets, North Louisiana, and his home state of Mississippi. So with that, Scott.
Mayor, City Council, administration, and citizens, thank you so much for having me this morning. I came on board in actually October, on October 1st. It's a great time to, you know, switch states, switch jobs right in the middle of a pandemic. But I am encouraged by the support that I've gotten personally and our organization's gotten from the city of Tyler and other stakeholders in the community. I come before you today to ask for the city to adopt a resolution in support of the Texas Enterprise Zone Program for McWayne, which is doing business as Tyler Pipe. As many of you know Tyler Pipe, they've been a fixture in this community since the 1930s. McWayne, which is based in Birmingham, Alabama, acquired them several years ago. And we're privileged this morning to have two members from the team at Tyler Pipe here this morning. So I want to introduce Greg Simmons. I recognize Greg Simmons, and he has the control of the plant manager and controller. So this program is part of, it's a state program, but it requires adoption of a resolution by the city of Tyler since this facility is located in extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Tyler. To qualify for this program, it has to be in what's deemed a distressed area. And the employees that's hired as part of this process have to be from a disadvantaged background. So it meets a public policy objective as far as getting investment in an area of our community that doesn't see a lot of investment many times, and it hits a population that really needs jobs. This is a significant project for them. And I'm excited anytime a company that's here reinvests in the community, it shows that they're happy here, and they believe in the community, or they wouldn't be making such a commitment to invest and hire people and retain people in our community. One of the tenets of our economic development program going forward is to sustain and enhance our efforts to help our local companies grow. I think that's the most important role of an economic development agency is to take care of the companies that are here, meeting payroll, and employing our neighbors. And you'll see that as we continue to evolve our economic development program. But I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, I've met most of y'all, all of y'all individually. This is my first time before you as a collective body. And certainly, I'm thrilled to be in Tyler. My brother.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott?
I do want to recognize other members of the Tyler Economic Development Council team that's here this morning. I've got Dr. Felicia Herman, and she deals with the mechanics and the management of our incentive programs that we advocate. I've got Victor Valier as a vice president of economic development. Also have Lauren Hayden, who's the newest member of our team. She's our economic development specialist. So they're all natives of the area, and they do a tremendous job for me day in and day out in helping our community be better.
Great. Well, for the Tyler Pipe folks, thanks for your commitment to Tyler and your investment in Tyler. Have y'all been around, what, since 1935? Been around forever?
Yeah, for Greg, I didn't know if y'all wanted to, I couldn't remember if we introduced Greg or not.
Greg Simmons and the controller, plant manager and controller.
Well, glad you guys are here. We appreciate you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution nominating Tyler Pipe for the state enterprise zone.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we have the most exciting agenda item of the day coming up.
I've been looking forward to this one all day, Mayor Council, it's going to be you guys today, the city manager. No, in addition to the police department, I think almost everybody here should recognize that I also have the opportunity to oversee animal services and code enforcement. And recently, an issue was brought to the city in reference to individuals' opportunity to house and keep chickens at their residence, and specifically in reference to the setbacks that were established. Currently, they're at 50 feet, meaning that if you get from each side or the back of property from the front, they have to be 50 feet from the edge, which makes it very restrictive. We took the opportunity to, through planning here with Heather Nick and Kyle Kingma, with their assistance, to look at those and establish some new recommendations to you today to see if we could lower those down to make it more accessible to people. And we all know that, we recognize the, why they want it, why they want to have this opportunity. A lot of people want to have that access to farm fresh eggs. They want to keep and maintain them themselves. We see it, the police department, where individuals bring those from their properties here to other friends and neighbors here inside the police department. We see it in our own personal lives, and I think it's a big one here. I think the nutritional values, the health benefits, but actually talking to Stephanie and Heather last night, the ability to care for these animals could be soothing for the soul. Some people want to have that opportunity to care for these animals. But I think the recommendation we're making to you today is that we limit those, we reduce those setbacks from 50 feet from each side to 15 feet. None of the other standards are changed. Right now, you currently can have up to six chickens and maintain those on your property if you can build that coop to do it. We also want to make sure that those numbers aren't changing, that the requirements associated with keeping it clean, to maintaining the actual conditions they're kept in stay the same as they are right now. The only change we're recommending to you today is to limit that down from 50 feet to 25 feet, but also require that it be further than the 25-foot setback from the front of your property. And we're excited to make that recommendation to you. We start to recognize, and as you start to research this, how many people already do this? And how many people want to have this opportunity to do it? Today, I make the request that City Council consider adoption of an ordinance, admitting that Tyler City Code, Chapter 14, animals by clarifying animal nuisance regulations, including distance and setback requirements for containing foul, confined and foul.
So the setback is 15 feet.
It'll move to 15 feet, yes, sir. And 25 feet from the back front of the property. I will tell you, I was joking with Heather, and I was a little nervous with this one because I didn't know what the mayor was going to say when I got up here and I started asking. And some others, I figured there's going to be some jokes about, hey, what happens if a chicken gets to the road? Is he going to cross the road? what happens if a chicken gets to the road? Is he going to cross the road? I don't know. That's a universal question. We haven't figured out the answer yet. But I think it's a concern. It was brought up to us by citizens, the staff, and we wanted to consider it. We looked at everybody else's, and this is our recommendation to you today.
Mr. Mayor, I was actually contacted by several people in District 4 that had laying hens and didn't realize they were in violation of the ordinance. And so I talked to city manager about seeing what we could do to change this because these people were concerned that the chief was going to show up code enforcement and take the chickens. So this will solve that problem for those that want to have laying hens.
I've had chickens. And so personally, I thank you for proposing this. I've got a card here from Nikki Abashan. Come on up. I guess you're for the chicken ordinance?
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Okay, can you say your name and address for the record?
My name is Nikki Abashan. I live at 403 West First Street in the Azalea District. I'm a business owner in Tyler and a citizen my whole life. I know the topic of backyard chickens has a tendency to ruffle feathers, and I would like to share my experience and thoughts regarding an amendment to the current city ordinance. I'm born and raised in East Texas, so it might come as a surprise that my first true interactions with chickens didn't come until March of 2020 at the age of 36. At the time, I was a first grade teacher at Caldwell Elementary, and the pandemic had just brought with it a wave of uncertainty. As teaching and learning went solely virtual, teachers everywhere sought out new ways to keep students engaged in learning. As the grocery store shelves emptied for longer periods of time, I decided to combine our lifecycle lesson with some real-world application. I located some fertilized eggs to hatch in my home, and our entire first grade embarked on a virtual journey into the world of chickens. Once they hatched, the tiny little peepers won me over. Never in my wildest dreams did I foresee my future having breakfast in the backyard, watching my chickens do their cheeky things. But there I was, enjoying the simple comfort of watching chickens peck around as the world moved deeper into the pandemic. Since it takes several months for chickens to lay their eggs, we did acquire three laying hens, and that brought in a certain ease, especially in uncertain times, that we could at least count on the eggs from our backyard as the food supply chains tried to stabilize. Fast forward several months, and unfortunately, my now pet hens that were a source of food and responsibility for my family had to be rehomed because my property doesn't meet the current standards, which is why I'm here today. I absolutely agree that there should be regulations in place to help govern the keeping of animals. However, as the ordinance is currently written, it is not an inclusive ordinance for the residents of Tyler, especially those that might benefit the most from collecting their own eggs. The current ordinance requires that a coop be 50 feet in all directions. That would mean the property would have to be a minimum of 100 by 100 feet. That's at least 10,000 square feet. In my case, my yard is 60 feet by 150 feet. We have a 9,000-square-foot lot, and it's more than generous with the city. New housing developments that are city-approved have vastly smaller lots that would not allow citizens to be within the current ordinance, thus making this ordinance very exclusive. Keeping backyard chickens is nothing new. During both World Wars, victory gardens were encouraged, and that included chickens. Uncle Sam partnered with the Department of Agriculture during World War I, stating it was expected that each family keep hens. The Daughters of the American Revolution even launched a fundraising campaign to re-chickenize the nation. I believe now is the time to update the requirements of this ordinance so that it is inclusive of more, if not all, of the citizens of Tyler, and allow families to have a sustainable contribution to their household, not to mention their excellent garbage disposals. As our city grows, we will continue to get closer and closer to our neighbors. That is why some larger cities have already made adjustments to their city ordinances. Dallas requires that the coop be 20 feet from property lines. Fort Worth requires that the coop is 50 feet from your neighbor's home. Both of these would allow more Tylerites to be within the ordinance and be able to keep chickens. Austin even has a backyard chicken initiative to help the city reach a reduced household waste goal. Some common concerns about chickens are their waste, their noise, and lowering property values. Five hens produce approximately five ounces of garden-friendly fertilizer each day while compared to an average dog that produces 12 ounces of unusable waste. Hens are not ordinarily noisy. A barking dog and a lawnmower emit twice the number of decibels as a rooster, so keeping roosters out of the city limits will make the noise complaint a moot point. According to Forbes' list of the top 10 housing markets appreciating in value, all 10 permit backyard chickens. New research is actually being done on the therapeutic effects of chickens in humans. Chickens are being brought into retirement and nursing home facilities across the nation to bring comfort and purpose to its residents. It is my hope that our city council votes in favor of amending the ordinance to make backyard chickens more accessible to all citizens of Tyler. Not only would an amendment ease the burden on animal control, but it would also allow Tylerites to be more independent and self-sustainable and provide for their families. Thank you. And if you vote yes, you can come to my house and have breakfast and watch the chickens.
Mr. Mayor, Nikki contacted me. She's the spearhead behind this. And so she gave me the start to contact city manager to get this worded today. So thank you, Nikki.
Oh, thank you for your passion for chickens. And just for your information, my chickens, this is going to sound awful, but my chickens like Kane's Chicken. Sorry.
I've heard what you're going to say.
Any other questions for the chief?
Hey, I learn new stuff every day.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for O1.
Move to approve at one.
Motion by Wynn, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Beat that, Lisa.
They say you learn something new every day.
Good morning, mayor and council. Lisa Crossman, city engineer.
Good morning.
Item M1 is a request for a construction contract for improvements to the Briarwood Estates channel. This is a natural channel that runs through the subdivision. It's currently eroding into neighboring properties, and the city had promised these property owners that we would address this channel at some point. Now, granted, that original promise never gave an actual timeline, but it has been a full 10 years since we made that promise. The erosion is getting significantly worse, and the city did think that it was time to move forward with this project. So in June of 2020, we did award an engineering contract to KSA. They provided a design to make improvements to the channel, which basically just includes cleaning the channel up, repairing the areas of erosion, and installing some filter fabric and rock rip wrap. Design is complete, so the project was publicly advertised. We opened bids on April 13th. We did receive six bids. The low bidder was solid bridge construction at $139,675. So again, this is a request for a construction contract with solid bridge construction for these channel improvements.
Any questions for Lisa?
Move to approve, M1.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M2.
This next item is a request for a construction contract for the 2021 asphalt enhancement project. This is our annual overlay program where we identify streets based on the pavement condition index as well as visual inspections that are performed by our city staff. So we put together a list of streets that are in need of overlay. This contract was set up with multiple streets that were put out as the base bid, and then we did include a couple of areas that would be two separate alternates. There was the area that are circled in red were the streets in alternate one, and then that smaller area circled in yellow was alternate two. So the contract was set up so that depending on how the unit prices came in, we could select either the base bid alone or any combination of the base bid and the alternates. And it just came out such that the base bid plus alternate two would bring us right to the limit of our remaining budget in this particular program. So staff is recommending that we award this construction contract to Rentleton Kay in the amount of $3,375,506 for this annual overlay program.
Any questions for Lisa?
I just want to make a comment. I'm excited to see all of the activity in District 5, so thank you very much, Habsin, Sales Tax Board, and Lisa Crossman. With that, I'll make a motion to approve M2.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M3.
And this project has to do with the Martin Luther King Boulevard improvements. As you know, that's a project where we're going to be installing, or we are installing sidewalks on Martin Luther King Boulevard from Gentry to Broadway. We've also, over the course of the construction, identified some additional work that needed to be done. That includes some drainage system improvements at Glenwood as well as installing some traffic signal poles at the intersection of MLK and Palace. And the result of that additional work, plus some delays that we've experienced due to both the weather and the work that the railroad needed to do at the railroad crossing, has resulted in a significantly increased amount of construction time. So the contract that we had with Adams Engineering, who is now known as Langen Adams, included construction phase services, which, among other things, also included construction inspection. That contract is now, they have used all of their amount of money that was in that original contract for inspection, but we do still have this additional work that needs to be completed. Therefore, we are requesting authorization for a contract amendment with Langen Adams for additional construction phase services for this project in the amount of $33,000.
Any questions for Lisa? I'll entertain a motion.
Aye, offer that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
M4.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am Tiffany Curry, project engineer in Tyler Water Utilities. Item M4 is the engineering services contract with KSA engineers for creek crossing reroutes and repairs. You probably remember that KSA has been contracted with the city since 2019 to inspect and assess our creek crossings, sanitary sewer creek crossings. So they're going through the entire system, and they're looking to rate these on a criticality scale of A through E. And we renewed that contract and extended it in February of this year. And so during the course of these assessments, we have identified six different creek crossings that need to be addressed. They need repairs, but they will not be easily repaired in place. They need to be rerouted for various reasons. They're either too close to the creek, and there will be erosion issues, or there's a conflict with something, some existing structure, so they need to be rerouted. So this contract that I'm bringing to you today is for engineering services to reroute and design those six sanitary sewer lines. This includes preliminary and final design. Easement acquisition will need new easements for these since they will be relocated. Bid phase services and construction phase administration for a total cost of $390,430. My request is that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services contract in the amount not to exceed $390,430 with KSA engineers for the creek crossing reroutes and repairs.
Any questions for Tiffany?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? M4 carries. Hi, Kedrick.
Mayor, council. Okay. Mayor, council, you have item M5 before you. This is our quarterly financial report for the period ending March 31st, 2021. And this report compares actuals year-to-date to the same period for the prior fiscal year. And the funds in your packet account for about 70% of our overall appropriations. There's other funds that are not in there, internal service funds and capital funds and such. So I'll just kind of briefly hit some of the highlights, and we'll start out with the general fund. We're expecting the general fund to be about $833,000 less than budget. And that's primarily due to moving violations, court fines, they're down, as well as we're kind of lagging on some of our franchise revenues. We'll continue to monitor that, but definitely we have made up for that in our expenditures. We're expecting expenditures to be about $1.6 million less than budget. So move to water utilities. We're expecting revenues to be about $421,000 less than budget. I'll just caution you, we are going into the summer month, so the next report I have, depending on the weather, it could be, it could be better. So also, we'll look at the expenditures on water utilities. We're looking at expenditures being about $1.8 million less than budget. Solid waste, we're expecting revenues from all sources to be about $51,000 less than budget. And we're expecting expenditures to be about $384,000 less than budget. Airport fund, we're expecting revenues to be about $52,000 less than budget, and we're expecting expenditures and inter-fund transfers to be about $175,000 less than budget. You'll also see in the airport fund in your packet, we anticipate on getting some new federal dollars there that are helping out with that fund. Also, development services. We're expecting revenues from all sources to be about $42,000 less than budget. We're expecting expenditures to be $69,000 less than budget. Also, the hotel tax fund, we're expecting revenues to be about $617,000 greater than budget. And I'll just put a footnote there, as we put the budget together last summer, we didn't really know how our hotel revenues were going to turn out, and we have rebounded on our hotel tax revenues. Starting back in January of this fiscal year, we actually started to exceed revenues for the same period the year before, which was a non-COVID period. So it appears that, you know, our hotel revenues are strong. We hope they continue to go that direction. Also, we're expecting expenditures to be about $128,000 less than budget. Also, our employee benefits fund, we're expecting revenues to be about $82,000 greater than budget.
Kedrick, are the slides stuck?
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. That's what happens when you can't see that very well, and you follow your notes down here. You forget to flip. So anyway, thanks for that. But our employee benefits fund, we're expecting revenues to be about $82,000 greater than budget, and we're expecting expenditures to be about $171,000 less than budget. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those for you all.
Any questions for Kedrick? The numbers look pretty good to me.
Yes, yes.
No, I'll say.
No, I'll say for Linda, since she's not here, the Employee Benefit Fund looks real good.
She's probably watching.
She's why I hope she is.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the revenue and expenditure report.
Move to approve, M5.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item that I have for you is our quarterly investment report for the period ending March 31st, 2021. We have approximately about $128 million that we invest, and this chart basically depicts how those are broken out. As you can see, they're broken out between our CDs and then our pooled cash investments. So, our CDs are pretty much long-term investments. Typically, what we do is we do a laddering approach on our investments, and typically what we try to do is do a two-year CD, and we try to have a CD come up for maturity every month, and that's pretty much the approach that we take on our investment strategy. Our pools, pooled and cash are basically our liquid dollars that, you know, pooled and cash, basically bank account and money market funds. So, we have a lot of flexibility with those to move around as we need cash. So, you'll see here, this is basically just a summary of our investments. You can see that they're broken out between our regular city funds and our revenue bonds. We have to track our revenue bonds separately for IRS reasons. It's called arbitrage. But you'll see that as far as our investments, our fiscal year-to-date return, our average yield is about 90 basis points or nine tenths of a percent. And so, our primary duty is the security of our funds, and the Public Funds Investment Act highly restricts what we can and can't invest in. So, basically, our portfolio, I think we have about 21 CDs, and the goal is to have, keep about 24 and have one maturing every month. Also, the next investment report you'll get, we will have clothes on our two bond issues, Water Utilities, 28 million, the hot bonds, about a little over 10 million. So, you'll see a little bit higher number as far as investments on your next report. And it just depends on that point how quickly we spend the funds there. Having said that, that concludes the investment report, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Any questions for Kedrick?
I've got one. So, I think you may have already answered this, but with the CD, you know, the CD returns have been so poor for years. Is it just not, and I'm not proposing anything different than this, just asking the question that are cities really hamstrung, how they can't choose?
Yeah, the CDs is where we get our best return. It's just a matter of how many years you want to go out. Two years seem to be the optimal point for us. Also, the banks have to collateralize our CDs, so it costs them a little more to offer us a CD. Basically, they have to collateralize at 102%. So, if the bank fails, we're guaranteed, any money that we got, we're not gonna lose that.
But as to your concern, Councilman Curtis, yes, there is quite a bit of federal and state oversight on how municipalities can utilize their funding, their funds towards investments just because of bad actors in the past.
Right. And it, you know, the Public Funds Investment Act, through our state statute, it tells you what instruments you can invest in. We do have, we can invest in agencies and treasuries, bonds that are backed by the forefathers of the federal government, but the CDs just seem to be the best for us at this point in time.
Might need to invest in chicken houses, chicken coops.
And typically, we don't invest in any equities. Some of our pension funds will have equities in it, but our operating funds, we don't do that.
Good. Any other questions for Kedrick? I'll entertain a motion to accept the investment report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kedrick. Stephanie.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This morning, I'm here to present a quick item. It's just a memorandum of understanding. We've been working with Smith County to relocate our parks and tourism administrative offices at Harvey, since we are gonna be tearing that down hopefully here pretty soon. So, they're gonna be located at the second floor of the Cotton Belt Building, and this agreement is really just an in-kind exchange with Smith County that allows us to utilize the facility and exchange any of our property usage. That would be Rose Garden, any of our parks facilities, for a period of time that we're utilizing their facility. And again, it's just an in-kind, and it will be based on if our facilities are available, of course, because we do have rentals at Rose Garden. They have been using the Rose Garden facility for different courts and things during COVID, so we expect that they would still continue to use that facility during the week if they need to. But we're asking today that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with Smith County for the use of office space at the Cotton Belt Building for Parks Administration during Rose complex construction.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to the judge and to the commissioners for doing this. They don't have to do it, but I think it's all in the spirit of this new relationship, or not new, but better relationship. So, thank you for working with them and...
We appreciate them, and they've been so responsive and helpful through this process, so we appreciate that.
Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we are to the consent agenda. Does anything need to be pulled?
Move to approve, the consent agenda is presented.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Mayor and Council, a few items, just kind of bring to y'all's attention. The Smith County Appraisal District has issued the 2021 appraisal roll preliminary certification letter to us, which starts the process of property tax levy development for the coming fiscal year. The information that we got contains the value analysis for Smith County taxing jurisdictions, preliminary taxable value comparisons, new construction estimates, and average home values. For the city of Tyler, we saw the following. The estimated 2021 taxable value for the city is preliminary at $9,888, oh, pardon I still got that wrong. And so, oh, $9,888,000, we'll go with that. This is a 5.2% increase over the valuations over the 2020 certified values of last year's at $9.3 billion. The new construction for the city for the 2021 rolls is estimated at $153 million, $153.7 million. This is in comparison to the estimated $158.1 million for the 2020 rolls and $148.5 million for 2019 rolls. And the average home value in Tyler is now preliminarily at $217,124 for 2021, and this is in comparison to $210,000 last year and $196,000 in 2019, to kind of put in perspective. And for those of you that are involved in either residential development or like, know that that's even for probably what we'll see for '20 and '22, will go up quite a bit. Now, switching over to the Police Department for a few different items that they have done that I want to kind of make special note of. And they would like to give a special thank you to Tyler Water Utilities Department for assisting them in a new initiative for the Police Department. They provided them with a boat that will be transitioned to the first Tyler Police Department Lake Patrol. The boat is currently in transition, will hopefully be on the water soon. And the members of the Priority Response Team that we have with the Police Department will be attending training with the game wardens to learn inspection operations and water safety courses. Once they are trained, they'll continue to work with the game wardens to improve safety out on Lake Tyler. Historically, we worked around the lake, but have not had the capability to actually go on the water. So, this was, required us to rely on others to go out there and take care of situations, and now we will have the ability to go out there and do that ourselves. So, Chief Tyler, we'd like to thank especially Assistant Chief Jax and Lieutenant Jason Burton for their efforts in this project. They fully cleaned and removed items from the boat that will be updated and upgraded. There's a lot of excitement around this project, so we look forward to being on the water this summer. And then another issue that the Police Department's been dealing with has been the purchase of the AT&amp;T building next door to us here, between City Hall and the police station. And since that property was purchased, they've been transforming that building into their Crimes and Forensics Lab. And so, especially if you get a chance, especially tomorrow, to go through and do a tour, they will show you as far as how, it's a little different than CSI, what you see on TV, but it's just as impressive and incredible what they're able to do. They've done so much of the work themselves as far as cleaning out the building, removing the debris and old materials, cutting walls and doors into the building. In addition, they've had contractors come through to do electrical drops throughout the building, install computer wires, and to get the area ready. And so, some of the things that we had that, when we purchased it, we're like, nah, we'll probably end up tearing this down. These guys have been just kind of, just go-to-its and have been transforming those into things that are like this, that we would never imagined would be needed, but they're able to utilize those different pieces in there. And again, we appreciate Assistant Chief Jax, he actually has his own YouTube channel where you can watch, I can't remember if it's Rusty Does It or something like that, where he goes through and he shows a lot of the work that he's able to do. Sergeant Jeff Ratcliffe, who is, has so much enthusiasm about this project, and it is very contagious. Detective Jamie Tarrant, Detective Rebecca Hudson, and Detective John Stone for their hard work on moving this great project forward. They have been a ton of sweat equity. And tomorrow, we are having an employee lunch actually in the area, and so we invite you to council to come join us from 11:30 to 1:00 to have a burger and then get a tour of what they've been able to do over there and see what they've been able to put into it. And as a reminder, we are continuing with our Parks and Recreation Ribbon Cutting Palooza this month, as we hold a ribbon cutting for the improvements at Wilder Park on this Thursday evening. We dedicate the new art wall at the Hillside Park on Saturday morning, and then Fun Forest Pool Ribbon Cutting on Saturday, May 22nd. And the mayor will be in his swimsuit, ready to go down the slide again that morning. This is gonna be exciting summer for our community, and we're ready to have some fun in our parks.
Thank you. Anybody have any other comments, Fred?
I do, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
And it'll begin, the first one will begin with a comment. I really appreciate hiring an interim in the Water Utilities Department, Water Utilities Director, in Duck Box, and now begins the two questions. Is there been any discussion or have you given thought to extending his contract to help with the transition when you do hire a new Water Utilities Director so that it goes beyond the three-month period? And then the second question is, is as you continue the interview process and narrow your candidates for the Water Utilities Director, are we going to have a reception for like the final two candidates or whatever so that council and maybe the development community can meet with them also?
So, for Doug, his contract is kind of open-ended as, the preliminary amount of time that I told him it would probably take is about three months, but yeah, we can continue to utilize him through Tyler, as far as not Tyler first, but through Texas first, the company that does the placement piece for as long as we continue to need or want that to go on. And so, most definitely, he'll be assisting with the transition. Then on to your second question for a reception alike, that is definitely something we're considering. We're kind of right now putting together the interview panels for what looks to be right now five applicants that we've narrowed down to for coming in to do interviews with. And since we get it closer and narrow it down further, we'll look to see as far as what other involvement that we want to bring into that.
Great, thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to approve.
We are adjourned.